dozens upon dozens of projects across the state are dedicated to helping communities of color deal with air pollution by being able to provide clean buses, clean transportation, tons upon tons of projects that are going to be threatened if Prop 6 passes. That's why CLCV is strongly opposed to Prop 6 and we're proud to join with our business and labor partners in opposition. Thank you.
Brother Wright?
Good morning. I'm Symbia Wright, proud city employee from SEIU Local 721, representing 96,000 members. We oppose Prop 6 and we ask you guys to continue to oppose Prop 6. It will be detrimental to public safety. The roads, the streets in the city of Los Angeles, they need repairs and we need to continue to have public safety with the streets prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Preben?
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Preben from Studio City. And this is, you know, I think a lot of people want to take care of the infrastructure in California. This is, I would say, the Republicans' best chance to have a, you can't really have an upset in California, but to have a good night because people out on the roads are pissed off, sir, about this tax. I mean, when you look at the meter going higher and higher, people get frustrated. So I think that we, you know, now, this is, we got the firefighters and all the engineers and all of the local governments and everybody behind this because we want to keep things rolling and try to fix things up. But I would, I would really appreciate it if the city council, for example, the county board, would make it a little more transparent, a little more, you know, and over at Metro, we talked about this, says it's going to get a lot of clean buses going, sure, but not to busing people up to Miraloma where they're going to be incarcerated. You know, we have to make smart decisions. So I think I can support saying no to canceling this funding, but I really hope it comes along with some kind of a plan that's comprehensible and transparent because this body has big, remember the lawsuits are on all the bicycle potholes?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Preben. Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Council President Dan McDonald, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and our 50,000 members. We strongly oppose Proposition 6. Los Angeles used to be known as the city of the future where innovation and opportunity were readily available to all comers. In the 80s and 90s, we became the city of decay. And under the leadership of Mayor Garcetti and this city council, we've begun to build again and reclaim that title of city of the future. We are in strong support of your resolution to oppose Proposition 6. Thank you for your time, council members.
Okay, thank you. Was there anybody else on this item that I didn't call? Okay, so, members, did you want to weigh in on this one way or the other? We're on item two dealing with Prop 6. If not, then my recommendation would be without objection that we adopt the CLA report and resolution. And, Mr. Clerk, that's unanimous. Okay, now, let's slide into item one. If I could get the cards on that. So I'm going to call you up and I'll call you up several at a time. And the quicker you get to the mic, because I want to try to get to everybody. Susie, Shannon, Stanley, Chapman, Fred, McLean, Jared, you're back again, Wright, Sharon Wilson, and Frank Gully. Hi.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Good morning, council members. I'm Susie Shannon. I work with the homeless community here in Los Angeles. I'm asking you to join me and the California Democratic Party, ASME State Council, SEIU State Council, California Federation of Labor, California Teachers Association, CNA, Mayor Eric Garcetti, Western Center on Law and Poverty, and over 150 senior disability, homeless, and tenants' rights organizations supporting Proposition 10. Two weeks ago, I was in Highland Park with many families who were facing a $750 rent increase. These are Latino families primarily with young children who I will see on the other end of this. I'm just asking you to support this and give the city the right to enact and expand rent control, to address our growing homeless population, and also to limit skyrocketing rents. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Next, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Stanley Chapman, and I'm here to ask that the council members support Proposition 10 as we have a serious problem here in LA with homelessness, with the rents too high, and we need help. People need help. We need big business, realtors, developers, they get all the perks. It's time that the people get help. We need the help. So I'm asking the council members to please support Proposition 10 and come out in favor of it because people need help. That's all I can say. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down.
Good morning, Gerard Wright. Again, with policy manager from LA County Business Federation, 175 business organizations that employ 3.5 million people in Los Angeles County. We're looking at a couple of factors regarding Proposition 10. One, we support propositions one and two will actually address the housing supply problem, which is one of the key factors leading into our homeless affordability and availability crisis we have in Los Angeles. Looking at since 1988, when Proposition 8 passed in the city of Los Angeles, that dropped housing production by more than 75%, creating an immediate scarcity over the past 30 years. Also, looking at CEQA lawsuit abuse, which is a deterrent factor to increasing housing production. Next to housing, next to transit, 70% of those lawsuits are affected through CEQA. And if we can streamline that process, actually allow compliance without the lawsuit abuse, we can provide the actual housing production that the city and the county needs to create, reduce costs and create affordability. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. Frank McLean here, ladies and gentlemen. I've worked all of my life. 2015, I got hit crossing Sunset by an underinsured drinking, texting driver, two subsequent shoulder operations. Just as I think I'm recovering in July, I get shot December 16th in the left lower leg walking my dog in the western Melrose area. I'm living in a subsidized apartment where they were trying to evict me, and having been between jobs for the first time in my life, I found myself at risk. I contacted Mitchell Friel's office at that time as a victim of crime. They were really kind enough to make a call on my behalf. I had been working, trying to get in subsidized housing. Thank God, everything fell into place at the last harrowing moment where I was accepted into LA's first GLBT community. So with that in mind, I hope at the end of this, you all vote.
Thank you. Okay, and as the next speaker is coming up, let me call on Charles Tate, Joe Delgado, Jamara, I didn't see her, and Jessica Duboff. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Wilson. I'd just like to say good morning to the president and council members. I'm here today to get a yes vote on Proposition 10. The reason why I'm here today, because I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I've been living in Los Angeles mostly all my life. I'm also retired city, working for LA Unified School District. And I live in subsidized housing right now. And because of the housing crisis that's going on right now, I can't even find a place. I'm on Section 8, and no one in Los Angeles County will take Section 8 anymore. Only thing they want to take now is subsidized housing, but you have to meet a standard of whatever the line is. I don't meet that because I'm on Social Security Disability. And I'm asking you guys to vote yes on that because I don't even have a place in Los Angeles to move. I don't have money to leave the city, and mostly all my friends and relatives have left to move out of the city, but I don't have resources to leave.
Thank you. Next speaker, identify yourself.
Good morning, gentlemen, council members. My name is Frank Gully. I'm a 67-year-old senior. I live in a place called Triangle Square. Subsidized housing primarily for the gay, lesbian, transgender community, all seniors. If it wasn't for this particular situation, I would probably be homeless. The thing you guys need to be clear on exactly what means Prop 10. It's not enacting, it's not enacting any kind of rent control at all. It simply gives back the rights and the powers to each neighborhood to decide for themselves. The ads on Prop 10 are deceiving, and they're mean, and they're nasty. They do not represent seniors. They do not represent veterans. It's important that we look out for our fellow citizens. It's our obligation. So please, please, please vote yes on 10. Thank you for your time.
Where were you raised?
Brooklyn. We never worried about housing in Brooklyn. Everything was good back then.
I got you. I just remembered that accent. Yes, sir.
Morning. My name is Joe Delgado. I'm with ACE. We're in a moment right now, I think all the council members up there recognize, we're at a critical moment right now. We have, this past Thursday, we had over 29 cases come into our tenant clinic, all facing rent increases of over $200 to $300. These folks, working families, can't afford that in their budget, and I think the steps that we're taking, hopefully the steps that the council takes today to endorse this and move this to the council, will go through. We need to ask ourselves, what kind of California do we want to see? One for the wealthy or one that is where working families can stay in the cities that they work in? Thank you.
Thank you. And let me call for Danny Bakewell Jr., Nicole Sahinian, Elizabeth Harley, and Christine Rango. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council president and members of the council. My name is Lamont White, and I'm a member of SEIU 721. I'm here with my union brothers in emphatic support of Proposition 10. Housing prices and rent costs have gone up consistently, and it's becoming a dangerous part of everyday Angelenos' budget, and we need to show some concern for that. It's plain and simple. The citizens and the workers of Los Angeles should be able to afford to live and work in the city of Los Angeles, and that's why we're in emphatic support of Proposition 10.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming down. Jessica?
Good morning. My name's Jessica Duboff. I'm here on behalf of the LA Chamber of Commerce in opposition to Prop 10. There is no doubt that the high cost to rent a home is a major quality of life for Californians. However, expanding rent control does nothing to protect renters. It does not reduce rents or increase available units. It would actually make affordable and middle-class housing harder to find as rental units are removed from the market. It hurts immigrants and those that have spent their whole lives saving to buy property to call their own and support their retirement. And it would actually take control away from localities by allowing for extreme local ballot measures to be imposed and tying your hands to fix any unintended consequences associated with that. The chamber has a long history of supporting housing and funding solutions that work. However, we stand with a large coalition of affordable housing advocates, labor and business groups, and bipartisan legislators in advocating that Prop 10 will not create affordable housing, will not increase our supply of housing, but simply make our crisis worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Danny Bakewell III, and I'm representing the Greater Los Angeles African-American Chamber of Commerce. GLAC has voted to oppose Proposition 10, which is disproportionately harmful to Black-owned engineering and construction companies. Affordable housing, addressing homelessness and supporting affordable housing is GLAC's number-one priority, but Prop 10's efforts are misguided and will do more harm than good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So again, I'm looking for Nicole, Elizabeth Harley, Christine Rango, Juan Palmer, Terry Grant, Shane Phillips, Mark Rogow. If I call you, don't hesitate. Just come on down. Earl Goldstein, and identify yourself. Yes, sir.
Good morning, city council. My name is Terry Grant. I came down with just simply simplicity. The rent is just too damn high. I encourage everyone to vote yes on Proposition 10. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, please identify yourself.
Buenos dias, miembros, honorable del consejo. My number is Juan Palma.
Mr. Weezer, can you help us out a minute? I can't. We don't.
Do we have one translator?
Here we are.
Okay.
Can you just kind of do the mic back and forth? So go ahead, sir.
Buenos dias, honorable members del consejo.
Good morning, honorable members.
La razón primordial por la que estoy presente en esta reunión.
The main reason why I'm here today.
Es para enfatizar que la crisis habitacional de la ciudad de Los Angeles.
It's to let you all know that the crisis in Los Angeles.
Ha llegado a unos limites insostenibles. Tenemos la como consecuencia el problema de las personas sin hogar.
The crisis has become really difficult mainly.
Entonces estamos solicitando al consejo que por favor voten sí en la proposición número 10.
We are asking the members to please vote yes on Prop 10.
Pensamos que en esta oportunidad esta es una coyuntura especial para la sociedad de la ciudad de Los Angeles y del estado de California.
This is very special for the city of Los Angeles and for the state of California.
Y pensamos que tiene que darse una solución definitiva a esta crisis habitacional.
And there has to be a definitive solution to this crisis.
Por tanto, estamos solicitando el apoyo y la decisión de votar a favor de la proposición 10. Sí en proposición 10.
And we are asking for your support for Proposition 10.
Muchas gracias.
Okay, and your name?
Thank you very much.
My name is Juan Palma.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Mark Rogow. I live in Westwood, and I own a four-unit building in Palms. I'm here to encourage you for a no vote on Proposition 10. And it's just simple economics. I agree with the people in this room who say that rents are too damn high. They are too damn high. Why are they high? It's very simple. There are far too many renters chasing far too few properties. The only way to alleviate that is not through government regulations, but to encourage additional housing on the market. And I, you know, the repeal of Costa-Hawkins is going to do nothing more than open the doors for city and county governments to make it more restrictive than it already is. That only performs exactly the opposite, which is to discourage developers from building, putting additional housing on the market. I have a very strong belief that when government gets involved in going to battle against the gods of supply and demand, they're destined to lose. I would encourage you to consider support, to vote against Proposition 10.
Thank you for coming down. Yes, sir.
Good morning again, council members. Shane Phillips with Central City Association. CCA believes the housing crisis requires a comprehensive approach that includes not just more housing, but also increased funding and improved tenant protections. That approach does include reforming Costa-Hawkins, but Prop 10 is not the way to do it. Prop 10, like past initiatives such as Prop 13, doesn't just significantly change the law. It also eliminates the state's ability to fix unintended consequences or rein in cities that use the law in bad faith. We know that this city council has the right intentions and the know-how with respect to rent control, but not all cities do. The housing crisis is a statewide issue, and we need every city to participate in the solution, but Prop 10 will hand anti-housing cities a tool that lets them effectively opt out. Costa-Hawkins reform should be led by the legislature, where it can be written to allow increased tenant protections without risking new housing and subsidies that are also essential parts of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name, my name is Earl Goldstein. Thank you, honorable members of this committee and the city council. There is no credible evidence that passage of this proposition would in any way significantly reduce homelessness or alleviate, except for a few lucky tenants, the crisis of rental affordability in the city or county of LA or one of any of its surrounding successor cities. In fact, as every single reputable study shows, the opposite is true. Governor Jerry Brown recently signed a series of pro-density and pro-housing-friendly bills into laws, including one that aims to force wealthy cities to allow more additional affordable housing. Prop HHH of last year was a step in that direction, and that's the direction that our city should be going to and this council should be going to. The passage of Prop 10 is an anti-growth measure, not a anti-rent control measure, or not a rent control measure. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey.
Good morning, honorable members of the council. Christine Rango with Building Industry Association. So BIA is here today to express our displeasure at the fact that the city is considering supporting Prop 10 because we know what Prop 10 will do. We know that across the state, it will perhaps, because the rent is too damn high, it will help the people potentially, potentially, who are in those homes or in those units. What it will not do is it will not create additional housing, zero. It will, there will be no rent rollbacks, and there will be actually zero assurance for the people who are in those rentals. So it's possible that the people who are in those rentals, even if they are in rent-controlled units, because of the amount of incentive, excuse me, because there will be no, it's not going to help people because it may help some of the people who are in those units momentarily, but because it will disincentivize any production or investment in the city and housing.
Thank you. How's your doggy? How's the dog? Good. Glad to hear that. Okay, so let me get Marvin Gilliam. Mr. Preben, I was going to call you anyway, so you're right there. So get Mr. Preben, Marvin Gilliam, Janet Gaynor, Kenneth, Kenneth, and Bruce Joy. Mayha? Anyway, Mr. Preben?
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Preben. Yeah, it's Eric Preben from Studio City. I'm on the Neighborhood Council, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. And I think we all agree that politicians are greedy, and that certainly $60 million has been set aside by the developers to kind of, you know, battle against this. Now, the question is for the people, do we want it or do we not? So it's very confusing. So what I would just suggest, and I know Marquis Harris Dawson and Weezer are here today. They weren't here last time. We were talking about the debate requirement, but I'm going to propose that we get some of the more knowledgeable people for and against. When there's less money at the state, the city gets less money, and the programs that they have that are needed are cut. So we would urge that this body oppose Prop 10. It's going to be voted on in less than four weeks. Let the people speak on their own. We urge you to either oppose or be neutral, and if you want to support more housing, support Prop 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
My name is Marvin Gilliam. I'm a resident of San Pedro. And for whatever reason, my rent was raised three times in one year. That's ridiculous. My neighbors had to move because their rent was raised. It's a lot of homelessness in San Pedro. It's sad. I will be voting on November 6th, yes on 10. And I'm here to represent the blue shirts, t-shirts, and the rent is too damn high. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Is this for community impact statements too, for Neighborhood Councils as well?
Do you have a community impact?
Yeah, I'm representing Koreatown Neighborhood Council.
Come on, uh, where's, for those of you that don't understand, if, if we could let him in, Al, in the event that there's a community impact statement from a Neighborhood Council, I bring them to the center table, and because of the action of the Neighborhood Council, and because we are in partnership with him, they're giving him more time, so, you know, just go on and I'll cut you off when I think you've made your point, so go ahead. In fact, I bumped into you, weren't you at the vigil? I saw you on Vermont, that wasn't you, Vermont and Wilshire? Yes, okay, I knew you looked familiar. Can we give him the mic? Okay, I state your name and go right ahead.
Hello, everybody. My name is Kenneth Mahia, and I am representing the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council. We represent over 120,000 people in Los Angeles, stakeholders who reside, own property, or even conduct business in our neighborhood. Los Angeles is currently facing a housing and homelessness crisis. Families in Wilshire Center, Koreatown, and throughout the city are facing displacement, homelessness, and financial hardships due to extremely high rents. In our Neighborhood Council, we routinely get requests from developers to provide statements of support for new developments ranging from replacing rent-stabilized ordinance units to new hotels and new market rate units, with only 10% to 30% allocated to very low-income and affordable housing, and also to even to new karaoke bars or restaurants opening as well. In order to protect families from the increase in rent that these new developments often bring, it is crucial that we protect the community from displacement from large rent increases. The Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council supports the repeal of Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act of 1995, which limits the scope of municipal rent control policies. The repeal would give the city the option to control rents when tenants change, instead of permitting units to move to market rate, and would allow rental controls for new constructions in single-family homes. The repeal would protect tenants from massive rent increases, enable people to stay in their homes, and prevent more Angelenos from becoming displaced and homeless. The Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council also supports the current law that rent control policies may not violate landlord's right to a fair financial return on their property. Therefore, the Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council, representing 120,000 people in Koreatown, support Proposition 10, the repeal of Costa-Hawkins Act, and supports our city council in doing the same. Sincerely, Wilshire Center Koreatown Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Thank you, and I met Kenneth at a vigil on a Friday evening about five weeks ago, and he informed me that the Neighborhood Council had taken that action, so it's good to see you again. Thanks for coming. All right. Is that Bruce, or you gonna? Go ahead.
My name is Bruce Choi, and I'm here today to tell you guys, well, I'm from Koreatown, and just recently I've noticed that the rents have been increasing quite dramatically everywhere I go. Especially, my friend recently was just evicted from his house, and he's been living in there for 20 years now. And basically, yeah, he told me that basically it used to be $500 a month, but now it's all the way, gone all the way up to $1,000 a month, just from the landlord increasing it arbitrarily. And now he has been forced to move out, and, yeah, he has nowhere else to go. It's, it comes to that point where even longtime residents like him are being forced out of their homes. So I really support this Proposition 10. We need the residents to stay in the way they used to live. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm looking for Walt Centerfit, Beverly Kenworthy, and a Jacob last name with a J. Why don't you come and identify yourself?
Elizabeth Harley with VICA.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. I'm here representing the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, or VICA. We represent over 400 businesses and nonprofits in the San Fernando Valley and all over the LA region. VICA is strongly opposed to Prop 10. It repeals a key tenet of California housing law, creating uncertainty without any kind of a replacement. The lack of housing in California is at crisis levels, but Prop 10 will only make things even worse. It does nothing to reduce rents, it does nothing to address homelessness, it has no protections for renters, seniors, veterans, or the disabled. It provides no funding or requirements to build affordable housing, and it lacks a plan to address homelessness. And even worse, Prop 10 eliminates protections for homeowners and could reduce property values for California families and retirees. It's not a solution to the housing crisis, it's opposed by a broad coalition of veterans, seniors, and affordable housing experts. VICA supports housing solutions that work, such as the Affordable Housing Bond, which is also on the November ballot, but we urge the council not to exacerbate the housing crisis in LA by supporting Prop 10. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
Good morning, I'm Walt Centerfit with the Los Angeles Tenants Union, an organization of several thousand, all volunteer tenants helping tenants stay in our homes and avoid the disruption and displacement of our communities. The Costa-Hawkins Act prevents this council and the city and the advocates of working together to strengthen rent control as appropriate, including the protection of people that have been in a building that's 40 years old, but they're prohibited from being covered by just cause eviction protections because it was occupied after 1978. We need a lot more than Prop 10, it's true, to build all kinds of more housing and to stop displacing market rate and high-end development, but we do need this tool to help us keep people in our homes now. So we ask you to pass this motion, send it forward to council, and put the city of Los Angeles on record in favor of tenants staying in our homes.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Jacob Hadigee, and I'm here on behalf of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and it's more than 800 members. We are committed to finding solutions to the city's worsening affordable housing crisis, but unfortunately Prop 10 is a dangerous and reckless initiative, offers no protections for renters, seniors, or veterans. If passed, this would make housing less available and less affordable, and will eliminate protections for homeowners. Prop 10 will lead to decline in the market value of these properties and would also adversely affect the impact of construction of new rental housing in the state, as developers would be disincentivized to construct their projects in areas with strong rent control laws. The Hollywood Chamber, Hollywood Chamber of Commerce strongly opposes Prop 10 because we cannot risk the construction of new affordable housing projects on the whim of an ill-conceived ballot initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hey there.
Good morning, council members. I'm Beverly Kenworthy with the California Apartment Association. We recognize that there is a housing crisis, but we also know that Prop 10 is not the way to fix it, it will make it worse. Nonpartisan State Legislative Analyst Office has said that Prop 10 will lower property values and reduce state and local revenues up to hundreds of millions of dollars per year. Think of that, think of how that's going to impact public safety, our schools, our healthcare system, are we going to have to raise taxes to cover the shortfall? This is a reckless initiative. Wherever you are on rent control, this isn't the answer. We urge you to work with us to seek positive housing solutions that will not stop construction of affordable housing units, that will protect renters, and will also protect our state budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Eli, would you bring the baby to testify? Is that why, is that why you're here?
I'm supporting Prop 6, but you guys are.
All right. Was there anyone else here to speak, and I neglected to call your name? Please come up, sir. Just please come up and identify yourself.
Good morning. I'm John Pelzer. I'm a homeowner and a 35-year resident of Los Angeles, and I support Prop 10. By now, everybody in this room has seen the commercials against Prop 10 predicting that if it passes, it will cause everything from acne to floods of biblical proportion. The only thing, the one and only thing Prop 10 does is allow local governments the freedom to use rent control if it fits their local housing needs. For example, a local government may decide that rent control will help prevent senior citizens on fixed incomes from being pushed into homelessness. For example, a local government may decide that rent control will allow the firefighters, police, and teachers who serve their community to afford to actually live in that community. For example, I hear the buzzer, I thank you for your time, please support Prop 10.
Thank you, thank you for coming, and thank you for being so patient. Can I get John to come up for just a second? And if you'd identify yourself?
Good morning. Hello, good morning, John Wickham with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst.
Okay, let's say that Prop 10 passes. What happens in the city of LA the next day or the next few months?
Nothing.
Could you say that again?
Nothing at all.
So what would happen? The city then, the council, would be given more flexibility to?
That's exactly it. The city, the state preempted local control in the area of rent control. They took away the city council's ability to pass laws with regard to that subject. So once, if Prop 10 passes, then it would give local governments, again, the opportunity to consider rent control as an option in their jurisdiction.
And so various motions could be introduced to maybe planning or housing, and there would be a debate on the council floor as to how we might want to use this added ability or not use this added ability?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you, that's all, I wanted to make sure. Mr. Harris Dawson, Mr. Weezer, did you want to say anything? We're good? Okay, then, Mr. Clerk? I want to recommend that, without objection on this item, that we adopt the CLA report and the resolution, and it would appear that that would be unanimous from this committee. Okay, now, so that's done. What's before this body? No, wait a minute, wait a minute. We'll take applause, because we're going to have a rough day. Don't get it often, Mr. Clerk. So anyway, what's before this body?
There are no other items on the agenda, that clears the desk.
Okay, then this committee is adjourned. Thank everybody for coming.